So, meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Karski. It's just a reminder to silence your cellphone. I think they put that on there for me. Contact Craig or Carol if you'd like a listening device. So, the first item is I consider a motion to amend, no, approve the agenda, excuse me.
So moved.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item would be to approve the minutes we'll take, we have several, so we'll approve the first one, approve the special commission meeting minutes from January 10th, 2020.
So moved, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item would be to amend the minutes from the January 14th, 2020, meeting to correct the spelling of two names, the listing of two job titles, and the listing of a university in the refugee resettlement, item 10.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion to correct the spelling of two names. Our recording secretary does a great job of doing this stuff, but it can be difficult to get those things correct.
Yes, and we appreciate people letting us know when there's a correction to be made. So, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next would be to approve the commission meeting minutes from January 14th as amended.
So moved, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item would be to, bills to be paid in the amount of $2,824,607.37.
Pay the bills.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Barth?
$2,870,000 of this goes towards jail construction, so that takes the biggest chunk out of it.
Yep, thank you. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are reports, there's a report for the Minnehaha County Register of Deeds Revenue Report for December 2019 for review. Takes us to item five, personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
All moved, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, abatements, there are none. Item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine, petition for compromise, the lien, there are none. This takes us to public comment. If there's anyone here today for a public comment, this is your opportunity. We have a much smaller crowd today, it's easier for me to see people getting up. All right, if there's none, that would take us to regular business. Our first item is to consider a resolution to appoint the Minnehaha County State's Attorney.
Move for approval? Second, excuse me.
Madam Chair, just in this, trying to be clear, that person we're hoping to approve would be Crystal Johnson.
Yes, who's here with us today. We're excited about that. All right, so I have a motion and a second, are there any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
We had some good candidates that we interviewed, and I appreciate those that put their name forward.
As do I. We did have, it was a tough choice, but we are here today to go ahead and appoint Crystal Johnson, and so, if there are any other comments?
Would you like to make any comments?
We could.
I just want to thank you for this opportunity. I've been at the State's Attorney's Office now for roughly 15 years, with a three-year break there while I was on the bench. It's my home, it's where I live to serve, so thank you very much for the opportunity. I look forward to moving that office forward. We continue to work hard. Last week, we got convictions on a homicide trial and a violation of a protection order trial, so we continue to work hard, and I look forward to the opportunity to lead that office, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we had a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, congratulations. Thank you for agreeing to serve. All right, so that takes us to item 11, which is a presentation by the Southeast Council of Government. Good morning Lynn.
Good morning, how are you?
Great.
Got me keyed up, okay, perfect. So, I'm just gonna kind of run through the south, and I heard you had a short agenda today, so they said I could take as much time as I wanted.
As 10 minutes.
No, I told them I'd run through this quick.
She needs to identify herself.
Lynn Keller Forbes, I'm the Executive Director of the Southeastern Council of Governments, Minnehaha County is one of our members, and so you've asked me to come down and just kind of update you on what do we have going on, so I'll kind of skip through most of this stuff pretty quickly. I think some of the stuff that's new and fun that you'll be interested in is probably the housing stuff, and really, we started that partnership with you guys several years ago, and it's really grown and expanded through the years. So, we're one of six planning districts, we serve six counties in the southeastern part of the state. We operate under a joint cooperative agreement of our six counties and our four first-class municipalities. Membership is voluntary, and you guys are members of that and have been longstanding members of that as well. In 2019, we had revenues of about $1.8 million from a variety of sources, a majority of those comes from two different organizations that we always also run, which is the Southeastern Development Foundation and Dakota Business Finance, which I'll talk about a little bit later on. In dues, we took in about $280,000 in dues last year. We do a lot of different things, primarily, we write a lot of water, wastewater, those kinds of infrastructure grants and loans for different entities. Last year, the breakdown was about $83.7 million, that's a little bit skewed because we wrote the two loans for the city of Sioux Falls for their new wastewater treatment plan, so it's $65 million, that can really skew your numbers when they come in with an application. Basically, the return on investment would have been for every dollar that was invested, there was a grant or a loan, a low-interest loan of about $294 for an ROI of $2,992, 29,000 I should say, percent. I'm always trying to focus when I talk to you guys about how does that affect you in Minnehaha County. Of that $83 million, $70 million came into Minnehaha County, and again, a majority of that went to the city of Sioux Falls. Breakdown of dues, total dues paid in Minnehaha County was $152,000, so again, the ROI on that was $461.76 for every dollar invested. We also do land use regulations, comp plans, zoning ordinances, municipal ordinances, subdivision ordinances, we don't charge anything extra for those, so a lot of our second and third-class municipalities take advantage of those. We also serve as the coordinating entity for the Metropolitan Planning Organization, those of you who've had the pleasure to serve on the UDC, that's what that is, if you're a city that's over the size of 50,000, you're required to have an MPO per the Federal Highway Administration, so that's the area of the Sioux Falls MPO. All the money comes to us from the, it goes from Federal Highway to the Department of Transportation, and then to the Southeastern Council of Governments, and then we enter into subcontracts with you, I think you've just signed that not too long ago, and the money flows through us back down to you. Last year, about $49,000 went directly to you for staffing and travel for your planning departments. And then there were a couple of studies that also came through that as well, that you would have been involved with, which was the Maple Street, Park Street corridor, and then the I-29 interchange modification for exits 3, 4, and 9. We also run the Southeastern Development Foundation, which does both gap low-interest or loan funding for businesses, and then also, we do affordable housing through that. We had a great year in 2019. We overall, through the years since 2002, we've done about $27 million in loans through that program. And we did 31 in 2019, about $4.6 million for us, that's a record of that amount, $3.7 million and 22 loans went to businesses in Minnehaha County. Just a few, to give you a taste of a few things that we helped, were involved with last year's AT Analytical, which is in Baltic. We assisted with the Gage Brothers Concrete, their new building and their equipment here in Sioux Falls. One of the most exciting things that I think you'll be interested in is just kind of the affordable housing for a long time, and Auditor Bob Litz kind of got us involved in this. But we have served as a nonprofit developer here in Sioux Falls, it's very difficult to find people that want to work on low-income houses because the profit margins just aren't that great. So, one of the things we've done is we've purchased the governor's house, which is built by prisoners in Springfield, and then we have had them delivered here onsite, we've put on the garages, the foundations, a lot, all those kinds of things, and then we've sold them turnkey. Bob actually approached us in 2014 and said, "We've got some lots, can we give them to you, will you develop them and get them back on the tax rolls?" So, these are the first four lots that you guys gave us that we developed, five houses on, and now, those first five have turned into over 40-some that we've developed through the years, and we're on schedule to do 14 of them this year. We bought a bunch of land up in the northwest part of town, so we'd primarily kind of been focusing on that, it's in the area of kind of Maple and Marion in that, in that area by the new middle school up there. We did eight governor's houses this year, all of them have been sold with the exception of one, which is under contract to sell, first part of February. They did a new design, we were the first ones that put this together this year, but this works better for your narrow lots, so this is how they look on the outside of them. We get a lot of questions, are these manufactured homes? No, they're not, they're two-by-six stick-built homes, they don't come in pieces, they come all built in one piece, in fact, they're so energy efficient, they need air exchangers on them. But this just gives you a kind of an idea, what do they look like on the inside. South Dakota Housing actually used ours this year and had a firm come in and actually do staging in it because they used it to film their videos for all of their new marketing, so these look a little nicer, I don't have the money that we usually go in and stage them, but the pictures sure turned out nice. These do come, they're 1,200 square feet, they do come with three bedrooms and two bathrooms. We put, we finished them, so they come with all the appliances, including a washer and dryer, we put them on a full unfinished basement, we put on a two-car attached garage on that as well. I've got it listed at $183,900, but there's a lot of funds that we put into this to buy down that mortgage, so there's a $14,200,000 zero percent grant that disappears over five years, it's forgiven in increments, if you live there five years, it would be nothing if you sold it in your three or four, you'd repay that percentage that was left, and South Dakota Housing takes a second mortgage on that, so that really buys down what the homeowner has to borrow in funds. And then the Southeastern Development Foundation also provides a $10,000 zero percent loan, they don't have to make any payments on that, it just sits there, if they ever sell the house, or they try to do a cash-out refinance, then we would have them repay that as well, but saves them another about $400 a year in interest and some of those kinds of things as well. We've gotten those funds both from Dakota Business Finance and CCOG have donated to that as well, so it's just, that first mortgage then is down to about $160,000 for a brand-new home. So, we've done a total of 40 sales from 2015 to 2019, about $6.3 million. I know taxes are always a big issue, and if you estimate the, what we have sold those four and 2% of the sales price, that's an overall impact per year of about $133,000 that it would be generating based off of just those rough numbers. We've also gotten in the habit of where people have started giving us houses, and so we've, someone gave us this house, and we moved it in. We'll try anything once, but you can see as we, we'll put brand-new siding on it, we'll put new windows in it, we put a new front door in, garage, all those kinds of things, you can kind of see the progress on it as well. The city of Sioux Falls has also asked us to be involved with their buyout of their flood properties on Rose Lotta, so of the first eight houses they bought, we took three of them, and we'll be moving those to, we're working on some land where we want to put it, it wouldn't fit into our development, so it's not going up to our grasslands development, we're buying another piece and plan to put it there. They did call us and give us this twin home, it's on the corner of 33rd over by Augustana, they bought out all that area that was flooding. It's too large to move as one, we couldn't get it down the street, so we'll actually split it in half at the garages, and so we'll move it in two different pieces, and then we'll relocate it up to grasslands, and we'll leave them separate, so we'll end up with just two individual homes. These are about two-bedroom, one-bath on the main level, and then, we haven't kind of made the determination whether we'll do anything in the basement or not. The other thing we run is Dakota Business Finance, which actually serves the whole state of South Dakota and some counties in Minnesota, Iowa, and Nebraska. It offers the SBA 504 loan, which is primarily used to purchase buildings, can also be used for equipment, leasehold improvements, and those kinds of things as well. Structured, so the bank takes 50% of the financing, SBA actually issues bonds for the other 40%, and then the homebuyer can get in for, or the business owner can get in for as little as 10% down, which can make a huge difference for them as well. We had a good year last year, we did 28 loans, about $18.4 million in the entire state and in the surrounding states as well, with a total economic impact of about $49.6, almost $50 million last year. In South Dakota, that came up to be 22 loans, our other six were in Iowa, Nebraska, Minnesota. This just gives you an idea, there's several other CDCs in the state, typically, if you add all the other CDCs together in their volume that they're doing, we usually do more in volume in loans than all the rest of them put together, so we're doing a lot of stuff in the state. Couple of ones we did last year is Sunderman Manufacturing, which is again out by Baltic, the Ramada, someone did a purchase, and they're in the middle of doing some renovations in that as well, so we were involved with that. We did Fox Print, which is building a brand-new building, and have, in fact, we're hoping to close on that very soon. Hot Springs Spa bought their own building, we were involved with that as well. And that's all I got, how did I do? Was I in the 10 minutes?
You did good. Do you have any questions? Commissioner Barth?
Going forward, will the census affect funding from the federal government for like the MPO or whatever?
Now, I was just having a conversation the other day with Jim Feeney about that, and the next big break of where you would come would be $200,000, now the under is that we'll hit that $200,000, because the, and I was confused too, I looked and I went, well, if you add all these together that are in the area, you're gonna get $200,000, but of course, like the federal government, the urbanized area is really just confined kind of to the city of Sioux Falls, so if you look at that, we probably won't hit the $200,000, but if you do, it does somewhat change some of the requirements, I'm not sure exactly if it would change funding, but the thought is that we won't hit that $200,000, so it really shouldn't have any kind of an impact on where we're at, but that's the next big break, and there's also always some legislation to try and change what that number should be, should it be $200,000, should it be $250,000? We get about $1 million a year is what we take in from that process total that we kind of share among all of the entities that are in the MPO.
Would it be to our benefit to have that $200,000?
I don't really know what the ramifications would be if we hit that next level, I'm not sure if there's more funding involved?
Or less.
Or, yeah, or just more requirements and less funding, or I don't have an answer for you on that.
Could always invite a friend to come here.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, that was very informative, appreciate you being here.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to make a comment that I think the regular citizens don't understand the ramifications of this organization, and how integral it is to virtually all the governments in our area, and it's something that people should look into and learn more about. I really had little awareness of it until I ran for office.
I would agree that if you're not involved in any governmental entities, it's not an organization you're probably super familiar with unless you're looking for some financing, but it is a great benefit, and Commissioner Karski?
Just a comment to that, one of the first meetings that I did for UDC, I was on the city council at the time, back in 2011, I believe it was, so going back a few years, but Steve Metley was the chair of the group at that time, and you know, this is an example of some of the things that happened. When the sound barriers went up along Interstate 29 south of 41st Street there, the original plan was to put up basically gray concrete barriers, and that group had the discussion, quite honestly led by Steve, that, "No, let's do the pink quartzite, make them kind of like our community is," and that's how they changed from what would have been a gray concrete wall to something a little bit nicer, at least when you're driving down the interstate. So, those are the types of things that the UDC and the MPO can influence, so.
No doubt, I mean, they're involved in a lot of long-range planning that is, affects every citizen of Minnehaha County when you think about it, particularly when you look at roads and how people get from one place to the next, so, thank you. All right, so that takes us to item 12, which is to consider a motion to authorize the State's Attorney to sign an agreement with Paragon Health and Wellness for blood draw services. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. Drew DeGrove from the State's Attorney's Office, we are seeking authorization to sign an agreement with Paragon Health and Wellness. This is, the previous company was Test Point, they have changed ownership, so we're just updating the contract, this is a State's Attorney's contract, it will be, as of right now, we don't know what the exact cost will be, but it will be over $25,000, so that's why we're seeking your authorization for the State's Attorney to sign the contract per your compliance with your rules, Commissioners. So, the contract's not changing, the fees will remain the same, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions for Drew? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Move for approval, second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Next item is item 13, it's to consider a motion to declare Treasurer's Office POS Cash Register System as surplus for disposal through Data Systems, Inc. Good morning.
Good morning. We have a motion before you today to declare our cash registers that we had in the Treasurer's Office as surplus property. We've already, the, we purchased new ones through Retail Data, and that's what the old ones were too, and they agreed to dispose of them for us at no cost to the county. And the reason we're getting rid of them is because they were supported by Windows 7, and that no longer will be supported, and it would risk the county's security and stuff to the other networks that are involved in ours. So, hopefully you can approve it.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
Pam, by the way, you're the Treasurer of the county, and I don't think you got to say that, but anyway...
Oh, okay. Sorry.
How long have we had these machines?
I have no idea, you know, as long as I've been there, and that's at least 16 years.
So, they predate your...
Yeah.
...incarnation? Well, obviously, Windows 7 is no longer functioning in any way except as a scam, from what I've heard, so...
And we did work with IT on this too.
I'll make a motion to approve this. Second.
Motion in a second, any further comments or questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that takes us, next item is a legislative update. Carol Muller.
Good morning. Good morning Commissioners, Carol Muller, Commission Office. Craig normally is doing this for you, and as you'll note, that he prepared the memo for you, but Craig headed up to peer yesterday, so he could be at Legislature bright and early this morning. I just want to talk about what his main project is this week while he is serving as a lobbyist for Minnehaha County. He is working with Senator Wayne Steinhauer on gathering cosponsors, and along to gather outside agencies and organizations to support a local option, bed, board, and booze tax bill. Changes to the bill this year include allowing one or any combination of bed, board, or booze to be taxed up to a maximum rate of 1%, and this is often referred to as an entertainment tax in many municipalities. Municipalities have already been granted this ability to do that tax, and this is very similar in granting similar authority to that. Dollars raised would be required to be spent on public safety, rehabilitative, mental health, intervention services, and medical-related expenses. So, that is the main thing that we're working on, I know that Senator Steinhauer has received a lot of support for this, and we look forward to hearing more about that this next week as it drops. Couple other bills just we'll mention, Senate Bill 2 is requiring the DSS to fully support a statewide centralized resource information system, and you guys have been very supportive of that in the past. Senate Bill 35 is revising the appropriation for the state veterans cemetery, which is located within Minnehaha County. Senate Bill 46 is revised provisions related to the restoration of competency of criminal defendants. This allows for treatment to restore competency to be conducted in county jails with the county if the county sheriff concurs with that. And then Senate Bill 51 is authorizing the possession of a concealed pistol by employees in the county courthouse, which would not be our building, it would be the county courthouse, which they're currently prohibited in. Only a few bills have been dropped at this particular point, there'll be a few hundred more that will be dropped over the next two weeks, and we'll continue to give you weekly updates.
Thank you. Any questions for Carol? Commissioner Barth?
Let Gerald go. I occasionally speak, but Gerald rarely speaks. I was out there last week with the East Dakota Water Development District, and I talked to many of our legislators, and certainly the, I mentioned the veterans cemetery to many of them, but everyone wants it done, but nobody wants to do it. There's a water district bill that will be coming up to rearrange the border, boundaries of the water districts, adding counties' territory to the Vermillion Drainage District, and some of that will be cut off from the East Dakota Water Development District, but it makes it so that the boundaries of the drainage district more coincide with the drainage basin of the Vermillion River. So, right now, we are taxing people who drain into the Vermillion River into the East Dakota Water Development District, which is mainly the Big Sioux River. And along those lines, a lot of the groundwater that's pumped out in wells is getting more nitrates, and so the water, rural water systems mix it with water from other sources like the Lewis and Clark Pipeline to get the nitrates down to where it meets federal standards, which is 10 parts per million. And that's getting more difficult as we add things like Agropor up in Lake Norden, which is putting large amounts of nitrate into the water, but the state is working on that, and hopefully, we'll keep that under control, but I just wanted to mention that issue.
Thank you. Commissioner Benega?
I had a chance last Friday to speak to Mr. Steinhauer for a little while, and he's very, very engaged in the 3B support, bed, booze, and board, I guess. He also asked to make sure that we understood that he also needs our help in contacting some of the representatives and senators when they get through this process, but he's very confident that he has a good chance of making that happen, so I appreciate his work, he mentioned Craig's name, obviously, a couple times, and appreciates the work that he does, but I think we need to capitalize on that opportunity and at least see where that's gonna go, because that will make a difference to what we do as a county.
Absolutely, and he has been really leading the charge on that, and we're really appreciative for that. Commissioner Barth?
Wayne's wife just had surgery, and so our concerns go out to that, but you know, just a few minutes ago, we approved a contract for blood draw. Clearly, that's the kind of thing that alcohol forces us to do, alcohol in our community. I've long been an advocate of raising the taxes on alcohol to cover some of the costs that alcohol causes county government, and this potential revenue source, bed, booze, board, whatever, is the kind of thing that could help with that kind of expense that we continue to have, and not at a decreasing rate, I mean, it's costing more and more every year to take care of the criminal justice, public safety issues related to alcohol.
I certainly agree. Any other comments, questions? There'll be lots more to come, every legislative session is interesting. Commissioner Benega?
Sorry, one thing I forgot to mention was, I'm wondering if Craig could put some facts together for us so that we're all on the same page to make sure we're talking about the same thing as a group?
I know he's been working on that a little bit, so we will get that out.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that takes us to item 15, which is liaison reports, are there any liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Karski?
Last week, we had a joint meeting of the Minnehaha County Economic Development Association and the Lincoln County Economic Development Association, and I think you're all aware that we're actively searching for a new executive director of those, and the search is going well, plenty of very qualified candidates from the committee's reports, so it's limited as far as the scope of what's been happening, as far as the association activity, but we are, hopefully, in the next few weeks, going to fill that position.
Commissioner Barth?
Question, where does a person put their application in? Not that I'm putting it in.
Actually, if you go to the website of Makita, you would find the process there, and I don't know if that closed... don't know if that closed last Friday or if it's going through this Friday. I can't remember. But we are using a HR firm, a local HR firm, for the process of finding the proper, most qualified applicants, and trying to keep it local, but realizing that there might be somebody that wants to come to or maybe back to Sioux Falls that hasn't lived in the community for a while. So we're not just limiting, you have to be familiar with this area very recently, but we are willing to look outside if there is somebody that really wants to come here.
Anything else? Commissioner Benega?
No, go ahead.
I know he's liaising on something. So while I was in PEAR, we had a session with many legislators from both parties, in the leadership, actually, and the rural water systems and the water development districts. And one legislator from Minnehaha County talked about the area that he grew up near Madison. There's nobody living out there where he used to live, and we don't need to replace our bridges, and we don't need to repair our gravel roads. And I thought it was quite a shocking statement. I believe that we do, and I believe that one of the reasons why Minnehaha County has prospered so much is because of the fact that we have a road network second to none in this state for economic development, crop to a town or whatever, shoppers to town. And I really reject that idea. He also suggested that this was just a three-year temporary phase that weather goes through, even though we've had record rainfall the last two years. He referenced some rainfall back in the 1870s. Well, it wasn't as much as in 2019, and it wasn't as much as in 2018, and problems going forward might get worse. That's what the DOT thinks. That's what the governor thinks. We're going to have more flooding, worse flooding, and we need to be more resilient, more prepared, and that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Benega?
I just want to say I do have liaison reports, and the one that I was supposed to be at last week, Carol filled in for me and went to the Fair Board meeting. And the Fair Board did release its audit report, and frankly, it's very clean. There's a couple of minor issues, but very positive, and I hope that if people want to look at that, they can go online and obtain that.
That's good news. That usually comes to the commission as well, so we should be able to see that. That's very good news. Thank you. I just would kind of piggyback on Commissioner Barth's comments that I did meet with DJ Boothy, our highway supervisor, last week, and there is an amazing amount of work going on to keep our roads in good shape. There is definitely concern. I'm sure the mayor will be quite excited to hear. He'll get to talk about potholes a lot again this spring. The freeze-thaw cycle and the amount of moisture that was in the roadbed going into the winter is going to cause problems this spring, and so folks just need to be prepared that, you know, there are going to be issues, almost likely under the best of circumstances. And so we need to just be prepared for that. You know, they, we talked a lot about work of the UDC and the MPO and how that, you know, funnels into the work that we do from a planning standpoint, from an application for, you know, funding and the Maple project that we're working on. All of those entities work together, and so it's good to see the amount of collaboration that goes into those projects, the amount of pre-planning. And I'm just very appreciative of the amount of work that our highway department is doing, not only in keeping the snow off the road, trying to keep up with the ice. It's been a constant challenge, but in planning and looking forward to replacing roads or maintaining the roads so that they are in the best condition, and that goes to bridges as well. So, a lot of work and a lot of challenges. Every construction project comes with its own set of challenges, and so they're working through some challenges right now that we might hear more about later. Any other liaison reports? All right, new business? Any new business? Hearing none. Any old business? If not, I'd entertain a motion to recess.
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll take about a 10-minute break, and then we will reconvene for an executive session. Thank you.